The open meetings.
What's your title?
I'm a lawyer for the board.
You're a lawyer, what's your name?
Everybody straight here.
Jordana.
Jordana?
Yep.
Okay, you're the new lawyer, they just hired you, correct?
Uh, February.
February, okay. Um, in a public decor, once the meeting has ended, they can still talk to us publicly, correct?
They can't make decisions, they can't.
Oh, we're not asking them to make a decision? But if somebody...
Like that.
Yeah, and that's all we were doing?
No, there's more than three people and they made a quarter. There was, there's two, three board members were here, and when three board members are here where they can make.
Well, he was standing over there.
Doesn't matter.
You were standing there, so that would be two board members.
No, three, she's a board member.
One, two, that's two board members.
He's here.
He's over there.
No, he just moved.
He's over there talking to you, we didn't even address you, we wasn't talking to you, correct? I was addressing these two board members. Well, that's your business, you can excuse yourself.
Yes, sir, who are, I mean, yeah, I'm just saying.
Would you like to know my name?
I would love to know your name.
My name is Joe Hilton, H-Y-L-T-O-N.
And so to next weekend, or what is the board meeting?
Is this a consensual conversation?
It is, of course.
Okay, well, I'm gonna keep on talking to her like we were just talking, if you don't mind, Ms. Murray.
No, you can talk to her.
Okay.
I was gonna say, come over.
Have a good night, thank you.
Board meeting.
Mm-hmm. How you doing?
Good.
Okay, so back to what we were talking about. We're, yes, are you back in my conversation again?
I know, but are you filming without consent?
Are we back in our conversation?
Are you recording me?
We are in a public space, this is free to record in a public space.
Oh.
Keep on moving.
I don't agree to record.
You don't want anybody to be recorded?
I don't wanna be recorded.
Man, you guys do realize you're public servants?
Yes.
And you don't wanna be recorded as a public servant?
I don't.
Do you have a problem with transparency?
No, I don't, but I feel like you're trying to catch me in a box.
No, ma'am, I'm not, if you telling the truth, what is there to catch you?
I always tell the truth.
What is there to catch you in?
What's your question?
I wanna know what you guys are doing. I wanna know, Ms. Mary Beth, what are you doing about the librarians that you plan on removing from the school?
I didn't know we were gonna remove some librarians, I'm not privy to that information.
Oh, you didn't know anything about that?
I know that there's some conversation about budget.
Mm-hmm.
But that's all I know.
Well, this is the biggest concern of these teachers, this is why these teachers are here, and we would like to know, what are your plans on removing school books?
I'm not the one to talk to.
But what are your plans on removing school books?
Come on, Mary, we're gonna go, we're gonna go.
She doesn't need an assistant.
The school board, after the session has ended, the topic wasn't of removing anybody, and as I wanted to tell you, come back when there is an open session, when those things are actually open for your questions.
Ma'am, ma'am, look, if you wanna shield them.
I am their attorney.
If you, look, ma'am.
I'm their attorney, and I'm telling you.
That's great, am I suing them? Are they?
That is inappropriate attack on that.
Are they any, are they in any kind of position for a lawsuit, ma'am, or are you threatened by us?
I'm not threatened by you.
Are you threatened by your community that you live in? It seems like you are.
No, I'm not.
It seems very much so like you are.
You seem to be very aggressive and very angry, and there's no reason for that.
Am I aggressive because I'm a black man, or you're intimidated, or scared by me?
Guess what?
That's what it seems like.
No, I'm Serbian, and you don't know that until I tell you so.
Ma'am, oh, excuse me, I'm a little worried, I'm scared.
Away with your BS.
Oh, ma'am, I'm terrified.
Okay, you should be.
I should be.
You should be.
Thank you.
Cause I don't know anything about your BS. Nothing to do with.
This is the grave. You're welcome, anytime.
You have nothing to say?
No, she don't have nothing.
You can talk to him now? You're terrified, huh?
Sir.
Sir who?
I'll call the sheriff tomorrow.
Call whoever you need to, I dare you to call the sheriff's department.
You do?
They won't get here in time, but go ahead and call them, if you're that scared, sir. Call them up. You act as though somebody's scared of you calling the police, that's what you normally do, dial them, nine-one-one, do what you gotta do.
Why are you yelling?
You just yelled at him too.
Because he is.
Do what you gotta do.
Why are you doing, what are you doing?
Because I'm making sure that.
You have no right to record me.
We are in public.
No, you have no right to record.
I'm recording my husband.
You have no right to record anybody, especially not on social media like normally we do.
I love that we say it with an accent though, it makes it appropriate.
Four-four-three, five-two-three, nine-one-zero-seven. Matt Langford. Somerset County. It's the Somerset County Board of Education, the sheriff's.
Tell them where you're stationed at, sir, you're standing out front of the building in public.
Do what now? This guy, we just interrupted a board meeting, he's got in our turning space, being threatening and aggressive, and we've asked him to leave, but he's refusing.
Come on with it, tell them.
Yep, you got a whole group here who's not gonna coach on that.
He's being threatened for asking questions.
Better send a lot.
Okay, thank you.
You think people scare you, you think this community scared you, sir, we are not, we are not, we know why you're here, we don't like it, we don't want you here, we didn't vote for you, what you're doing is not right, sir.
Well, don't, you, you, this man's arguing against you, you hear him?
He's not arguing about anything. He's not arguing about anything.
Not yet, no, I don't see any.
Ain't nobody scared of you, ain't nobody scared of you either, Mr. Gleason. Y'all sit here looking, do whatever you need to do, I ain't going nowhere, this is public space. Ain't nobody scared of none of y'all, y'all gonna stop messing with my community, I'll tell you that much.
Alright.
I have the right to, I have the right to address my government.
And very, very, um, in people's face.
You hear that, did you hear what he said, did you hear him just lie? That is a false statement, sir.
It hasn't been physical now, it's been verbal. I'm the chairman of Somerset County Board of Education.
Give your title.
And he trying to piss off the people, he trying to get you to do.
You ain't gonna be there long.
I said verbal.
Think somebody scared of you? Ain't nobody scared of you, sir.
Okay, alright, well, that's enough, we don't need to keep hearing it.
You done called the cops now? As a public sidewalk, I am walking down a public sidewalk, I have the right to walk down a public sidewalk, I also have the right to address my government with grievances, and I will continue to, sir.
He's up, he's up, he's up.
He's in the back of my truck.
My vehicle is parked beside yours, sir, I have the right to be right here. Give him, give him the suspect description, sir.
Yes, he's African-American, he's probably about forty years old. He's wearing a.
You wanna say it's a nigger, don't you?
I didn't say that, sir. Yeah, he's wearing a jacket, a windbreaker, gray pants.
Is it what?
No. No.
You don't know, say it out loud, sir, they asked, are you in danger? Tell them if you're a threat, if you're in danger.
Okay.
And you're back again, you feel threatened the same way he does? You agree with that, you agree with those lies I'm getting in people's face? Your choice, Mr. Gleason. You agree with that? Cause right now, you have a right, with you being on the board and being voted in, you can tell the truth right now, you can tell that man that he's wrong, but you choosing not to. You making sure he's safe, you making sure I don't jump on him, my presence scare you? Heard y'all gonna remove all the black books from the school as well? Is that why you're getting rid of the librarians? Huh? I saw your kid at the pro- I saw your kid with all the MAGA gear on, is that what's going on here? You want everybody else to be just like your kids? Your kids don't even go to public school, correct? That's correct, and you're sitting on the school board, that makes a whole bunch of sense, doesn't it? Do you know anything about this community? Do you know what people deal with in this community? Huh? Do you understand anything about this community? You just get a title and a little bit of power, and you wanna sit on the school board with everybody else, right? Huh? Flip-flops, ask decor, that should be against decor, right? That's how you went to a school board meeting? At least you got a collar shirt on, right? That's professional. Boy, he had to go smoke on something, didn't he? I hope that ain't cannabis in there. You know, you can't have vapes and stuff while you're on a school property, right? Ain't that what y'all pushing, y'all don't want students to have vapes, but look like you got one right in your hand on school property, that's the most illegal thing going on right now, is that vape in your hand? You need to go across the street and smoke that, sir. It's not allowed on this property. Hope you got a card to be using that vape. It's my kids too in the school system. Y'all gonna respect my kids in the school system. I'm gonna treat this community like they're my own kids, I'm gonna fight every second that you guys are in office, cause it's not right, and you know it. You know it. If you half a man, you know it, and you admit it. Go ahead, Jordana, pull up.
Are you okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Here she go back, y'all, she terrified, I guess she coming to yell at me. Guess she coming back to yell at me again, it's terrified over here, she back again. May wanna move your vehicle, you're blocking the right of way, ma'am. Go back in your parking space if you need somewhere to park, there's several parking spaces down there, not keep it moving.
You really have problems, you really have a lot of, and we are not the solution.
You are not the solution, you said that with your broken English, you said that correctly, you are not the solution. Here they come.
I got her back.
Mm-hmm. Come on in. Tell your lies. That'll be me, where is he at? What's going on? Good, supervisor, get your supervisor out here right now, just to give you guys a good light, okay? And I'm asking you, Joe, nice to meet you.
What's going on, man?
Alright.
What are we doing tonight? What's going on?
Hold on, if you don't mind, this is consensual contact.
No, no, I'm all cool with it, man.
Am I being detained, or anything like that, first off?
You're being investigated, yes.
I'm being investigated.
You're being detained right now, yes.
I'm being detained?
Yes.
Okay, I plead the fifth then.
ID on you?
For what? What am I?
So I know who I'm talking to?
So you know who I'm talking to, that's not a purpose, I said my name is Joe, that's all you need.
What's your last name?
You don't need that, Joe, good citizen.
Okay, you, so you don't have an ID on you?
Okay, consensual contact, I can walk away, if it's not a consensual.
You're being detained.
What am I being detained for, sir?
I'm investigating a crime.
Investigating what crime?
Disorderly conduct.
Disorderly conduct?
You have an ID.
That is not enough information.
You have an ID. Joe, Mr. Joe, I'm being very cordial with you, okay?
I'm choosing to remain silent until you show what crime I have committed.
Okay, can I talk to you over here?
No, sir. I'm here addressing and grieving with my government, that's part of my government, he is voted in, I have, I have a purpose, sir.
We were here for a meeting, they opened it louder, I come in, I was crying, I was got to speak, nobody got to speak.
Also, I hope your body cam is recording, I will before you request it, huh?
Okay, yup, it is. So what, fill me in, what's going on here, is it like a meeting, what's going on, fill me in, that way I know.
He's coming here fighting for his case.
Someone threatening you? Who threatened you?
I would like to speak to another officer, because you already done messed it up, I understand you're a recalc, you don't understand what's going on, listen, listen to me.
Yeah.
You need to get somebody else to talk to me.
You're not working with me at all, you know, I got a new one I'm talking to.
Listen, I told you, my name was Joe, that's all you need, you already came across wrong, we'll try this again after this is over, but right now.
I came off happy, cool, and calm.
Okay, I'm gonna end this conversation again, sir. I gave you an opportunity, didn't I? Okay?
Alright, sir, I'm definitely broke, the sheriff's talking on visual recorded, okay, my ID number is six-five-zero-nine.
Thank you, for being polite.
From right now, okay? All we're asking is for you to leave, okay, that's all we need.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And why is that?
Uh, because, one, they're about to close the building, and then, two, they're asking you to leave.
Who?
Um, the school board themselves, they're asking you to leave.
Does the school board manage this, is he the manager, he's the?
Yes.
He is not in control?
At this current time, he is the facilitator of this building.
He's the facilitator of this building?
Correct, he is the manager.
Also, so, now, if you do that, I would like to talk to you outside of the grounds, if that's okay, if you're asking me to leave this property, if you're ordering me to leave this property under threat of arrest, I will leave this property.
I'm asking you to leave nicely, I'm trying to be.
No, I'm asking you again, are you putting me under threat of arrest if I do not leave this property from addressing my grievances with my government?
Did I say that? I didn't say that was gonna.
So I can stand right here then?
Well, they're about to close, and then, it's, you're not gonna be able to address anything, cause they're gonna leave.
Okay, once again, I can leave on my own time, if you're ordering me to leave under threat of arrest, I will get in my car and leave, if not, I'm gonna stay here and continue to address my government.
Okay, so, from there, okay, if they ask you to leave, them being the facilitators of this building, they're about to close, okay, if they ask you to leave, you need to leave.
So, are they closed?
Let me speak real quick, okay? Whatever altercation occurred in here, that's fine, okay? If it's, you're yelling and stuff like that, I understand you're upset, I get it, okay? I don't know what it's about, it's none of my business to know what it's about, alright? But if you're acting disorderly, they have the right to ask you to leave.
Did you witness me acting disorderly, sir?
No, but in Maryland, I can charge people for disorderly conduct after the fact.
In that sense, in that sense, if you're gonna charge me with disorderly conduct?
Did I say I was?
You just threatened me with that.
No, I did not, I said, in Maryland, you can charge somebody for a crime after the fact.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you now, supervisor, I need to speak to your supervisor immediately.
Well, that's not gonna happen.
You gotta do what you gotta do then, if, once again, if you ask me to leave under threat of arrest, I will leave.
Okay, well, if you're gonna keep continuing to see, then yes.
You're gonna arrest me?
If you don't leave, and you keep continuing to act, like, acting in a disorder.
You will arrest me.
If you do not leave, we're asking you nicely to leave.
Okay, once again, these wording, if I do not leave, will you arrest me?
Okay, well, why are we trying to come to that, why can't we just separate ourselves from that?
Can anybody else understand the question that I'm presenting to him? That's it. You have several witnesses, sir, sir, you have several witnesses out here that witnessed the whole.
They're leaving as well.
You still didn't answer my question, you're only coming at me one way, right now.
I'm not coming at you any kind of way.
Listen, sir, I asked for your supervisor several times now, you refused to bring him, okay?
Well, I didn't refuse, I don't have a supervisor, I'm the highest ranking deputy.
Well, you better call the sheriff, I would call the sheriff if I was you, step aside, call the sheriff, do what you have to do, matter of fact, if you were doing the proper investigation, you would ask the other witnesses out here to speak to you as well, there is a witness standing over there, there is a witness sitting in her car, you haven't spoke to anybody but the complaint. Well, go, y'all team hut, and y'all see what's going on, there's also a neutral subject right here, all of these people witnesses, sir, I asked you, instead of you confronting me and coming at me, do your investigation properly and see what actually happened.
Sir, what time did this occur?
Well, then he walked right back over to him.
Nobody even got to say.
As soon as they allowed him to sit down, they called the meeting to order and made a motion to adjourn.
They looked at each other, laughed, and dismissed. Because they can't, and they're abusing their power again. That's, that's.
I can definitely get that.
We've been here for an hour.
Only thing, only thing I ask you, sir, now, now that you understand what's going on, I asked you to do your job correctly and investigate this situation, cause right now, what's happening? That's considered a false police report. And I need for you to investigate that to the fullest, you have witnesses all here, there's people on camera, you can go view the camera footage. If what, if what he's saying is a lie, you need to charge him, okay? That's all I'm saying, because you guys were at the point of arresting me for something that I was doing, this is my, these are my rights.
Yeah, yeah, listen, listen, nobody said that, okay?
The guy threatened me, I have it on camera.
When I came up, first thing you asked me, am I being detained? I'm investigating something, yes, you are being detained, detained doesn't mean, oh, handcuffs, and my, no, 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 detained just means I'm investigating, I need to investigate.
But is Maryland a stop-and-ID state?
What do you mean?
Stop-and-ID, that means if there ain't nobody committing no crime, do you have a right to ID them?
I have a right to detain people if I'm investigating, if I'm investigating.
But do you have the right, do you have the right to ID them correctly?
Focus on what's going on here.
And if that's the case, somebody's messed up, we can go back, you still got a chance to fix this, cause this looks really bad.
Look, I applaud you, you obviously know your law, and a lot of people don't, I applaud you for that, a lot of people don't know their rights, don't know their laws, I'm, I'm, I applaud you for that.
And you made a mistake, I understand, you made a mistake, I gave you my name as a consensual contact, now I need for you to do the right thing, I need for you to fix this.
I'm gonna tell you something, my, my, I will, I will give my one hundred percent to resolve every situation I have ever involved in.
That's all I asked you to do.
That's what I'm gonna tell you, okay, I'm not the type to come out here and be one-sided, I just.
Because right now, once this post, once this post, I'm gonna explain to you guys.
But here's the thing, you approached one person in a certain manner, and you not.
He approached me when I walked out.
No, I did not, no, sir, you asked, is that him? You said, is that him, who's the subject?
I didn't know who it was, it was a bunch of, I was supposed to be making contact with him.
Exactly, so we have a false report, sir. I'm asking, hold on, look, I'm gonna stay my distance, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk to each other like men, okay?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay, now, when somebody makes a report like that, as a black man, you bring a gun to a fight, that person is calling you to kill me, that's what just happened. Slow down.
Say that again?
That person called you to kill me, it's a chance, a possibility, that you will, he called you to protect him.
Yeah, that's all it was.
That's all it was, he was scared, listen though, listen to me, he is, he is a voted-in official.
Okay.
Okay?
I didn't know I voted him, he just took, but whatever.
He called you under false pretenses to harm me.
He called you to do his bidding that he couldn't do.
That's what it makes, that's what it's looking like now for you guys, I need for you to fix this problem, I've asked you several times, you understand?
I'm gonna do my best to fix the problem.
Okay, you know how bad this looks?
Figure out what's going on.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Alright, so I'm gonna.
Look, I need you to understand, try to understand something, okay, so when somebody calls, don't matter who it is that calls, they call, I need police for this, it could be a load of crap, they could be calling, it could be completely false. I only have, cause I haven't spoke with you, I haven't spoke, I haven't spoke with anybody, I only know what my dispatch told me.
What I should have done was call about him then.
Whether that's true or not, I only know what my dispatch told me, so when I'm on it and I say, is that him, I was coming out here for what dispatch had told me was a male acting disorder. I'm not saying it was true, I'm not saying.
But it's a false report, if somebody made that accusation.
But that's all I know, and so I wanna, okay, I'm not here to arrest nobody, nothing, I just wanna figure out the problem and resolve it.
Exactly.
But when I came out and I was like, I need to know who I need to talk to to figure out the problem.
If somebody made that accusation, if I were to call you.
That's a false report, technically, you are right.
And if I did the same thing, if I did the same thing to him.
And unfortunately, we get that all the time, people just want cops to come, they call, and they make a false, you're right, you are one hundred percent.
That's a false report.
You're right.
That, he brought y'all here for no reason, because he couldn't handle himself, in a verbal disagreement or verbal conversation, he couldn't handle nor he.
You have a right, you have a hundred percent right, that is your second amendment, oh.
First amendment.
First amendment right.
Yes, sir.
Together, that is your right.
Peaceful protest, sir, and it is, we can address, we can address our. We can address our grievances without going, that's, that's all we were doing, sir.
Well, that's what he's trying to take from us.
That is your right, as American citizens, to do that, I'm not taking that from nobody, I had this here, because I was sitting here for a problem, and I wanted to resolve it, that is it.
Okay, I'm gonna do you, so we wanna get everybody out of the rain, we, since there's no threat of arrest now, and I see this guy's not gonna go look at the TV or anything like that, I'm, I'm holding you accountable, sir, and I want you to follow suit, and I want you to make this right, let's try to make this right.
He was hoping that something would happen nicely, he couldn't come back next week.
Okay.
There's a board meeting next week, and they gonna try to shut that shit down too.
Oh, is it, okay.
See, we're fired up, cause we have three children.
You have a, I, I have a kid, I get it, I have a two-year-old, I get it.
This guy right here, he wants to take, and this guy, they wanna take our books out of the school. They wanna take black books out of the school, and we have a problem with that, they wanna take our librarians away, we have a problem with that.
You're on my behalf, I have a problem.
Now, now that everything is resolved, all of us out here getting wet, soaked, I can give you my information, but I look forward to you guys following up and explaining to me what you're gonna do about this false statement, what you're gonna do about this.
Right, so we're gonna, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna look at the security cameras, okay, that building is obviously unsecure.
Well, what about inside the building?
Hold on, please, hold on one second.
They have cameras inside the building?
Yeah.
So, we're gonna look at the security cameras, and we're gonna evaluate what's going on, okay? Um, from there, if we find any kind of violation of law, then we'll go forward on that, if not, then, you know, there's not gonna be any kind of charges or anything like that.
Okay, and a false report is considered a violation of the law, correct?
Correct.
If he called y'all under false pretenses and said that he felt threatened, and that I was gonna harm him, and you guys came rushing over here, if he lied, you guys will address that problem?
Correct, but here's the thing that I'm gonna say, the caveat to that, okay, your feeling of being threatened, my feeling of being threatened, and somebody else's feeling of being threatened might be different, correct? I'm just saying, correct? You could have done things that I'd never done, I could have done things that he's never done, we could have had different experiences.
If being a big black beardy man scared somebody to send a dog on public office, bruh, we got more things to worry about than that, and that's all I did, and there's several witnesses, there's thirty, forty people who witnessed everything that happened, okay?
Right, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not discounting any of that, okay?
Okay.
I'm not discounting any of that, but what I'm saying is, if someone were to feel threatened, and say, we charge him for the false report, right? Let's say we go down that path, okay? And then he comes to court, was like, well, I feel threatened, you know, then, if he felt threatened, we can't, me and you can't engage that kind of thing, you know what I mean? If he says he felt threatened, right?
A person who felt threatened and stood right there and didn't get in his car, if he felt threatened, he would have got in his car, hopped in that car, and took off. If I was scared of some, I'm not. If I was scared of some, I'm not gonna stand around and talk to the person and say on the phone, I feel threatened, cause this guy's standing right here. I'm scared. I'm scared he gonna beat my momma. Hey, man, I got, I gotta go. So, these are, these are the signs. So all the evidence point that he was lying.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, cause in, in court of law, what does it take to convict somebody beyond a reasonable doubt, right?
Well, we got witnesses. We got everything here.
Right, right, but what I'm saying is, if there's any kind of reasonable doubt, okay, it's not gonna be a conviction, is what I'm saying, okay? So, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to, like, convey to you. Is that, me and you might not feel threatened, but whatever happened here, okay, before that, he could've been like, oh my gosh, what's going on like that?
So, I understand, I understand you gotta, you gotta mend the fence, okay? And, you gotta do what you gotta do. Now, let's, let's hit a couple points, then we, we, all of us can get out of the rain, okay? I'm gonna be real with you guys. You guys came up wrong. That's a bad approach, okay? And I'm sure you're gonna do my research. My name is Joe Hilton, H Y L T O N. So I'm sure when you get in, you're gonna address your sergeant, your lieutenant, whoever, and they're gonna tell you who I am, okay? Now, I'm a pillar in this community. I believe in my community. I wanna change things in my community. And the biggest thing is, the school system, our law enforcement and everything else. So, I'm gonna ask you as a man, and you as a man? When you approach a situation like that next time, don't come at that person like that. Address the situation accordingly. Do what you're supposed to do. Figure out, before you start targeting and threatening and throwing idle threats? What you have to do, cause we have to change this community. I love this community. I wanna stay here. But I will not work with people like this who threaten me, arrest, all kinds of stuff. I won't do it, man. We gotta be better than that. And I expect that you will. So, we gonna shake hands? Okay, and, and I expect to hear from you guys.
Yeah, right, correct. And here's the thing, though, Mr. Hilton, correct? Okay, like, there wasn't, what I said was, from, in Maryland, you can charge someone after the fact, was not a threat of arrest. I'm.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about when you told me that I had to leave.
I asked you to leave. I said, sir, can you?
And I asked you if I was being detained. You said, no, he asked me for my ID. That should not be your first course of action. We gotta work together and figure out what's going on. If it comes down to me having to identify or show you my ID, I don't mind. But if I haven't broken any laws, I'm not showing you my ID. That's an invasion of my privacy. This is something I'm choosing to do by giving you my name. You guys gotta learn your laws and stop disrespecting our community by automatically asking for ID. You can't do that. My mom was a police officer for twenty years. I love law enforcement, man.
And listen to this.
But that's not the approach.
I get that, but listen, listen, okay? Alright, we can ask people for consent to search. We can ask people for consent.
And I can say no.
Correct.
Okay?
It's all good.
And, and, but it's not all good. Your approach in the beginning was all wrong, and that's all I'm telling you guys. It's nothing you can say. Only thing I want you to do is think about your approach and how you started. And how you went after me instead of the real culprit, who was lying to you. You had the devil right there lying to you, and you was about to lock up an angel. You see what I'm saying? The devil whispers in your ear. He pulled you aside and he told you some lies. He's supposed to show you a video. He never did. I need for you to fix this. Okay? That's all I'm asking, okay? Alright, I'm, I'm wish we could've had, had a better inaction and I look forward to more, okay? Way better than what we had, okay, guys? Y'all have a blessed night. Be safe.